Ea e kala ma ka hikina, ka hiki mai aloha ku pona hei. Ku kahali ai kali ava i kini. Wa alea le mo la le ei. Eia ena pualei mo ki hana. Kamavahe lu alani uavehi ei. Evehi geia aloha ei. Aloha ku uonehana uwe. Aloha no aloha ei. Mano kalanipo aloha ei. Aloha no aloha ei. Mano kalanipo aloha ei.
Have a great discussion, all of you. Aloha.
Mahalo kumu Sabra. Aloha Kako and welcome to the Just Transition Hawaii Coalition's Candidate Forums. The Just Transition Hawaii Coalition supports a livable planet by prioritizing the urgent economic, environmental, and social needs of Hawaii's own local communities over corporate profits. This forum is co-sponsored by Community Coalition of Kauai and 350.kauai.org Climate Action Coalition, 350kauai.org. All candidates running for office were invited to the forum, though not all are participating tonight. One candidate had to cancel due to unforeseen circumstances, Minister Victoria Franks. And two additional candidates will be joining us who were not advertised, Billy DeCosta and Jackie Nelson. For those who have joined us, we thank you with a full heart. By participating tonight, you are providing an opportunity for the public to learn about you during this difficult period of COVID-19 that has made campaigning almost impossible. Questions were gathered from numerous sources, individuals, and organizations around the island, and were shared with the candidates before this forum. We've also included questions that were sent in by viewers like you. So some of those questions the candidates did not see beforehand due to timing. If you are watching either on Facebook or Zoom, please feel free to type your comments into the chat box. Our audience members will be muted so as to allow the event to occur within the scheduled timeline. Let us know in the chat box if you are interested in future forums or have suggestions on how things might be improved. There will be three rounds of questions, each round with a different emphasis. Candidates will be given different questions randomly. They each will have two minutes to respond. When there are 20 seconds left, there will be a verbal warning. When time is up, the mic will be muted. Furthermore, each candidate will be given one minute at the end, not for a traditional closing statement, but rather to respond to a question that was not theirs or to talk about something they feel wasn't covered by the forum. Without further ado, I will introduce candidates this first round with a short bio they provided, and some were shortened to be more uniform, in alphabetical order. Most of sites you can go to for more information. First round focuses broadly on agriculture, food security, land use, and waste. Candidates, as you respond to any of these questions tonight, you may want to keep in mind that when surveyed, the young people on Kauai unanimously said, "Kauai is not for us. It is just for the tourists." Our face, our first candidate is Jade Bai Ali Ali Batad, and she's been married to Poki Batad for 28 years. She's a proud mom of three children and has two grandchildren. Of all her accomplishments, she is most proud of her Ohana. Your question: What can the county do to duplicate the success of the North Shore in a project to manage some of the negative impacts of tourism?
Aloha. Thank you, Juno. First of all, I do aloha everyone on our North Shore for how they handled everything that they went through and how beautifully we've recovered. And I just think we need to look to our island and our native ways. And you know, when, when people are going right now down to Haiana or Ka'ee or even hiking up Hana Kapi'a, they're just saying that it's so pristine and so beautiful. That the reef is beautiful. They can see their toes in the water down at Ka'ee, through the water. And I just think we need to look at that and we need to look at how our island responded to the fact that we took a little break. I mean, it was, it was beyond our, our control with, with what happened. But our island responded in such a beautiful way. And we need to malama our Ina. We need to take that out of the handbook and see what we can do to love our island.
Thank you very much. Our second candidate, Addison Bulasun is a doctor in chiropractic and was born and raised on Kauai. Addison is the owner and operator of the specific chiropractic center Kauai and Maui offices. He is also a musician. Question: Would you support a higher permitting fee for non-resident home building?
Aloha Kako. This is Dr. Addison Bulasun, your Kauai County Council candidate. Yes, I would. This is a great question. As we're looking at what the challenges are upcoming right now, and we're facing it right now in our community, and for the next two, three years, it's gonna be tough. And let's be real, it's not gonna be one of those things where we can just figure out by just coming up with ideas. It's gonna need us to work together to figure out what's going on and collaborate and come up with solutions that we can work together on. And so I believe this is one of the, the ways that we can protect our island. One of the ways that we can find additional revenue to support what's going on. And in the reality, you guys said it, you know, kids, us, young people. Sorry, getting a little emotional. We feel like this might not be the place for us because we just can't afford it. Let's, let's be real. So hopefully with some of these things that we can do together, we can solve some of these problems like affordable homes, make this place a place for us. Not just us as in us young people, but us as the future that's coming through. Not only our age, but the kids below us, our, our friends and family who are having kids. I mean, just for the generations coming through. So I really appreciate this opportunity to share my thoughts. But in reality, a lot of this takes a lot of hard work. And I'm looking forward to working with a lot of people to figure these challenges out, especially the community out there right now. And for everyone that's jumping on, really appreciate you for taking the time to learn a little bit more about all of us. And hopefully, you know, the reality is some of these solutions will come from you. So I might get a question that I don't really understand. And so I hope at some point, if I don't, and I stumble, and you have a great idea, please
20 seconds.
to reach out and let's collaborate. Because the reality is, we're gonna get through this together if we work together.
Mahalo. Donovan Kabidi was raised on Big Island and is a father of three. He is a chef and a stagehand by trade. Donovan is an ordained minister and operates a small event management business. He is a longtime advocate for indigenous rights, social and environmental justice, clean and regenerative food systems, and safe spaces for our children. Question: We have been told for years that our landfill has reached capacity. What is the present status of developing a new landfill and what actions must be taken next?
Great question. One of my very top concerns is the way we manage our waste here on the island. I know we have explored options for a new landfill. And one of the ideas that I'd like to present is that we look into alternative waste management systems that will allow us to recycle, reuse, and support, you know, industry that is focused on waste management. One method that we could use to diversify our local economy and give folks here other options to move into. Waste management is a huge issue and we're shipping stuff to other countries. There's not really a solid waste management method that we, we can employ at the moment. So that's a very important thing that we need to look at. Our island is small. And you know, we've, as a society globally, we haven't really taken the time to address how we dispose of our waste. So lots of different options that we could explore, lots of different ethical things that people can exercise and do, how we spend our money, what kind of packaging on the items we purchase. All of these are small steps that can, we can take as a community to lessen our, our waste. So as an advocate, I'm interested in finding the people who work in various topics and bring them to the table so we can expand the conversation and dig into the ideas and different options that exist out there. So as far as waste management goes, it's definitely a high priority and something our county 20 seconds. needs to address. So I'm looking forward to having the opportunity to maybe work towards bringing people together to make action happen with how we manage our wastes. We can't continue to just lift the level of where we're at on our current landfill situation. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mason Chalk was appointed to the Kauai County Council in 2013 and has since then served three terms as a council member. He is currently the Planning Committee Chairman, serves as a Director on the Environmental Energy and Land Use, NACO, National Association of Counties Committee, and is the H Sac or Hawaii Association of Counties alternate. Question: What is the county's role in the management of freshwater resources? And what would you do as a council member to protect the public trust right to local water system?
Aloha, everyone. Great to be here. I wanna just take a moment to thank Just Transition Hawaii and Juno for you being the host this evening. And of course, all the partners who put this together and make it happen. This is an important question. The public trust is something that is embedded in our kingdom history. And so it requires us to recognize the pillars, the trust pillars, which include utility, which could include agriculture, and which include Native Hawaiian rights. And so these things have been, as we realize that water as a resource is more difficult to come by, coming to a head. And I think right now, the county's role with our water department has been for utility. And that has run up against some of what the state's kuliana is, which is managing some of the other trusts, public trust pillars. And so I think what's been lacking for many generations is our ability for all of these stakeholders to come together, to come together and figure out how do we manage it cohesively and together. Well, instead of what we're seeing right now, which is ending up in courts that are very costly, every one of these pillars, Native Hawaiian rights, agriculture, and utility, that means our housing, are important aspects for us to consider. And so we must find the balance in order to do that. The first thing we need to do is invest in the right kind of measurement so we know how much flow is coming out of every stream and how it is we can manage that flow to the right, to the right requester. The other aspect that I think is important and one that it, that the county is at odds with, with the state, is whose kuliana is it to maintain our streams and our waterways? This is something that is very unique to Kauai. All of the other islands and counties actually have taken over this maintenance. And yet it is a huge cost, one that we need to also bring our stakeholders together and have a conversation. I look forward to taking on this and working on this. It's something that's near and dear to me in my private and, and my professional life. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Felicia Cowden is running for a second term in the council. She has been an engineer, teacher, and small business owner. She is a public affairs radio show host and longtime community and legislative advocate who believes in putting people first. Question: In what ways might the county make the permitting of farm workers' housing more accessible?
Well, that is such a critically important question. And I think that what we have set up in the past, they worked very hard on it, but it is not effective. It works maybe to be a farmer's house. And when there's a five-year, what, what, what it is, is if you don't have your crop work for about two years, and that's $35,000 a year, you would lose your house and have to take it down. So you can't get funding for it. And I think that the way it's been structured, it hasn't been appropriate for actually farm worker housing. What I would like to see is something more mobile, more movable, where it is like tiny homes that can be bolted into concrete. So it's, it's strong, but they can be moved if they need to be moved, if it's not being utilized correctly. We are, even with our tiny homes community that we're looking at right now for our houseless, it can be something modeled in the same way, where there can be compostable toilets. So that when you have somebody living there that is truly a farm worker, it's, it's more temporary housing than the way we have it set up. Right now, we have not had that work to where anybody has moved in, in these years since it's been approved. Nobody has moved in there as a farm worker. So many of these farms, they need five, 10 people on them. Even if it's just five people, being able to have small affordable projects that go in there that are maybe $20,000, $40,000 per unit. I think that that is, plays on what had happened in the plantation era. And most of the time, the farm workers, they don't want to live there for the rest of their life. They want to be there maybe five or 10 years till they are ready to have their own home, their own farm. And I think that we need to be able to be looking at something more of that nature, especially when you look at the ranch hands.
20 seconds.
The ranch hands, those cattle move from field to field to field. And it would be easier to be able to move the units as the ranching site moves. And I think it's a very possible thing to do.
Mike Dandran is the owner of Custom Sounds Kauai. In this role, Mike has had the unique privilege of sharing the most special moments and rites of passages with thousands of Kauai residents. Question: What is the role of traditional Hawaiian agriculture systems in supporting Kauai's food supply? How can it be expanded and supported?
Well, the traditional Hawaiian agricultural system, and sorry, I'm taking notes, yeah? So you know, it, the traditional Hawaiians, or the ancient Hawaiians, they used the Apuaa. That is a area of land from the, going from the mountain to the ocean. And everybody that lived in the Apuaa had everything they need to sustain life. They had the salt from the ocean and the fish from the ocean. They had the fields to grow taro and banana. They had the, the trees up on the slopes for coalwood and things like that. And so if you lived in Apuaa, you had everything you needed. It was sustainable. And that's something that we need to learn from our ancient Hawaiians. They already figured it out. And right now, we are not sustainable. We're waiting, we're depending on tourism to, to help us out. And I think what we need to do is to look inwards to our island and look at our farmers and, and the things that we need to sustain just our island by ourselves. So to thrive. And, and so that's what I say. We gotta learn from the traditional Hawaiian agricultural system is to be sustainable using the Apuaa concept of using everything we need in the area for ourselves. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Billy DeCosta is a fourth generation local who grew up in Pakala in the sugar plantation era. And he is married to his soulmate with three sons. He is a 20-year environmental school teacher for the state and a local cattle rancher. Question: Should the county build a materials recovery facility, or what some people term as MURF, to process our recyclables?
I was hoping I would get something along the line of ranching and food sustainability and farming because that's my expertise. But I believe the county has a responsibility for recycling. And I believe we as stakeholders in the county, we, we, we as residents have our due diligence to recycle and do our best part to decipher our trash and recycle and, and separate. And I don't think we do enough of a good job. I, I also believe that there is a lot of material down at the county trash yards that can be turned into usable products. I, I personally during the quarantine time, took much metal pipe out of the county. I know we're not supposed to do that, but I was able to build cattle rails, cattle panels, and I was able to put it up on the ranch. And if you go and buy metal trees, it's very costly. I, I would like to see a better plan set out that we can do more recycling and put it back as a property that can be used, especially in our agricultural area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Deborah Linda Silva Carvero lives in Hana Pepe and believes in transparency and drug testing for all government and county employees. She believes that since our budget is in the hands of seven individuals, being focused is a must for our island. Question: What ideas do you have for expanding and diversifying the island's agricultural possibilities?
Can you repeat that again?
Of course. What idea do you have for expanding and diversifying the island's agricultural possibilities?
Well, there's a lot of land in Kauai. And I feel that there are a lot of people out there that wish that they could have a piece of that land so that they could go on it and do their own agriculture. It's all about living sustainably here in Kauai. The ancient Hawaiians did it. The Micronisians did it. People in Pakala, Kamakani, you know, they did it. And I feel that if you went back just a little and, you know, diversify some of the lands to people who wants to do it without giving our lands to high-cost developers, then I think that we could better our agriculture.
Mahalo. Luke Emslin is currently serving his first term on the Kauai County Council. He is the co-owner of a composites manufacturing shop on Oahu, is currently completing his final semester of a master's degree in public administration, and lives in Liuui with his wife and two children. Question: How might the county incentivize landowners, including state and county, to make available unused land to farmers and ranchers needing land?
Good question. First off, just thank you to the organizers of the forum for, for putting this together. What is so far our only forum here. Thanks to everybody else participating in the forum and everybody watching this. This is a extremely vital question. You know, I, we have, the county currently has things like ag dedication, which is a major incentive, which would reduce property taxes significantly for people who do utilize their land for ag and farming. You know, given that incentive and a number of other incentives, we're still seeing, you know, I believe between 2007 and 2012, 28% decline in small farms. I don't have more recent numbers, but we're still seeing the sort of plummeting of local ag, big and small. You know, and a huge component of that, or maybe the primary component, is development pressure on ag land. Most of our ag land is unfortunately more profitable building houses than, than crops, right? And so it's almost impossible for a farmer to really make it, growing produce and trying to pay off a mortgage. So from my perspective, you know, along with things like ag dedication and other types of incentive to get farmers, get people utilizing ag land is reducing that type of development pressure. So number one for the county council is, I feel like resisting calls for things like ADUs on ag land. Right? It sounds good. Let's add an ADU on ag land. Maybe people can have, you know, more farm workers on that ag land. But then you turn that land, you know, instead of one house per five acres, you're going one house per basically two and a half acres. That's no longer ag land. That's like a suburban neighborhood. All right, it's gonna be more expensive to purchase the land, harder to pay off a mortgage through farming. And then you get suburban encroachment into agricultural areas, right? There's a reason I think that
20 seconds.
Our breadbasket for Kauai is Mola'ua, and it's relatively because it has, has very little density. Lastly, you know, most of our new development on Kauai is happening on agricultural land and low-density residential land. Part of that's because we've made it so hard to build within our town cores. So incentivizing, reducing barriers to construction within our town cores to make sure that we're preserving our agricultural land for farming.
Mahalo. Richard Fukushima was born and raised in Kapaa. His interest lies in helping the Kupunas and veterans. He is a passion, he is passionate about education as well as other mainstream topics like traffic, housing, and roads. Question: Should the county have curbside pickup for recyclables?
All right. Thank you. Dr. Bulasun, I believe that Kauai is not for us, is just for the tourists, just for the young people, right? That's, I, I agree with you on, on that. But yet the question on curbside pickup recyclables. Right now, Kauai don't have any, have a limited amount of curbside recyclable pickup. And I think that's the green containers that the county has. It has to be separated. And there are different sites where you can, where you can sort your, your recyclables, even at the landfill sites. You can sort it, sort. In order for us to provide curbside recycling service to residents, the MRF, the Materials Recovery Facility, needs to be constructed on Kauai. Right now, the Kauai County does not have plans or to construct an IMRF at this time. So recyclables, curbside recyclables is not in the making right now. You have to recycle it yourself through the various recycle plants in different parts of the island. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fukushima. Ed Justice is the owner of Operator and operator of Talk Story Bookstore, which he started 15 years ago and is Kauai's only bookstore. Ed Justice and his wife, Euriko, are residents of Kalahaila. Question: What is your stand on the styrofoam bill that has been proposed to the council? And would you amend it to include plastic utensils?
Thanks for having me. It's funny that they're doing the styrofoam ban. I actually, 10 years ago when I ran, that was one of the things that I suggested might be good for the counties to do a ban on styrofoam containers. Because I know where I grew up in Virginia, they actually did that ban, I think, back in the 80s. So I don't see why we couldn't do it here. It's gonna be better for the environment. It just makes sense. It's a simple fix. Plastic utensils, yeah. I mean, we see, in Hana Pepe, I see plastic utensils all over the streets Friday nights. So that is something that takes a really long time to break down. So I think it would be worth definitely considering doing a ban on the plastic utensils. It might take a while to adjust. And of course, there's gonna be an added cost. But I think over time, people will get used to it, just like people eventually got used to, you know, styrofoam. So yeah, I think it's definitely worth doing.
Thank you. Aril Konashiro presently serves as the council chair. He is a graduate of Pacific University in Oregon and is a certified public accountant. He also works at Grove Farm Company Incorporated as a project manager and assists his dad with their 800 sheep ranch in Omau. Question: What could the county do to further support local food production, marketing, and distribution?
Thank you. I just wanna first of all say thanks for having this forum. You know, I, I'm pretty sure we're not gonna have any in-person forums. And you know, this is a pretty interesting way to get together. First time we've had a forum where my eyes are all over the place looking at everybody. But as far as encouraging agriculture, I would say expanding and diversifying our agriculture. As far as the county goes, I think one idea I had for the county was to better connect the farmers with their customers. And one way we could do that would be to work with our housing projects. You know, we have the Liuui Rice Camp project, we have Kalepa, we have the project in Princeville. And these projects have, you know, tenants that are in like maybe 80 units. Kalepa is an even larger project. And you know, my idea would be to kind of have, you know, this, a farmer available. And they'll provide kind of like when you go to Genki Sushi, you know, a list of produce they have available this week, the price. And you know, they would keep that list in their main manager's office. And you know, the tenants there would fill it out. They know what day they need to turn that sheet in. And then the farmer will get the sheets. And the very next week, he'll be bringing the produce all to that one, to that one area. I think, you know, as far as helping farmers, we really gotta, gotta get the customer to the farmer a lot faster. Again, you know, just making it more convenient for people to purchase local produce. The farmers markets, continue to encourage our farmers markets. I think it's a good way for people to get products. And I think with the, with COVID now, everyone is kind of looking at the farmers market first before they go towards the shopping center. At least that's what I, I've been doing. You know, you see a lot of pop-up farmers markets.
20 seconds.
And, you know, just, you know, connecting the farmer, any way the county can help. We, we do provide grants for agriculture in the amount of about 100,000. We did just get an ag specialist at the county to help coordinate the ag projects.
Thank you. Kipukai Koolei currently serves on the council as the Chair of the Council's Housing and Intergovernmental Relations Committee. He is also the Vice Chair of the Finance and Economic Development Committee. He is one of the two Hawaii Board Members for the National Association of Counties. And he works part-time as the Director of Operations at the YWCA of Kauai. Question: With sea levels rising and conservative predictions that much of our coastline Question, with sea levels rising and conservative predictions that much of our coastline will be underwater in the not-too-distant future. When and how do we plan to move our communities from the shorelines? Let's unmute you first. Hold on one moment, Kipukai.
Yeah, aloha. I do wanna say mahalo nui loa to everyone who put this forum together tonight. This looks to me like one of the toughest questions here. I think everyone's talking about climate change and climate resilience planning. And the effects that it has and will have on us in every way, our everyday life. As far as how we love and wanna be on the coast. It's a difficult challenge and I think, you know, some of the setback laws and preventing future development along the coast has been important. But I think even with a three-feet level rise, which is anticipated in the not-too-distant future. A lot of our low-lying areas will be threatened. And so we seriously need to think about how we will retreat. That's probably the most expensive and the most difficult challenge we have. And now also getting buy-in from the landowners. And, I mean, in some places, they're even talking about how they need to raise the money to help the landowners find alternative sites. As an island, we have definitely settled along the coast. We do have a lot of open, beautiful land in the foothills and more Maoka. And though that's, we like to keep that primarily for agriculture and for, you know, our forests. Which is important for our water. We just need to seriously work actively. And the county's been doing all kinds of work on sustainability and resilient planning. But I think the piece that we haven't necessarily addressed, I mean, maybe.
Twenty seconds.
And most scary piece is retreating from the coast to deal with sea level rise. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Jackie Nelson is currently on the Board of the Kapaa Business Association and President of the Kapaa Rotary Club. She would love the opportunity to be a full-time public servant as a member of the Kauai County Council because her passion is to serve her community. Question, would you support strategic Kauai County Planning Federal Grant Writing? And matching funds budget prioritization towards expanding multi-use bicycle-run pedestrian paved trails between Koloa and Kalahayo? A ten-feet-wide rumble bump protected shoulder on the Kauai Coffee Road from Kalahayo to La La La? And also safe shoulder improvements between Waimea and Kikaha?
Um, yes, Jackie Nelson, Kauai County Council candidate. Thank you for having me. I'd like to thank the Just Transition Hawaii Coalition and all of your subordinates for hosting this forum tonight. I'm already learning a lot as a first-time candidate for anything. And I actually love this question because I'm enjoying seeing the eco bikes in Lihui. And when I travel to Oahu, I, I always use the BP system. So I would definitely support a strategic plan to increase these bike paths. Make them more usable in terms of commuting, getting to work, leisure time. I think there are several pockets of communities here on Kauai that could benefit from, from these systems. And I think that not just for the residents, but also tourists. Because we need to reduce the number of rental cars on the road. And I think that systems like eco biking and BP systems would work great in Honolulu. I think they would work great in Kauai Poo. I would love to see something like this way out on the west side. And I know that in the short term, it would be inconvenient to be instigating these programs. And, you know, pouring the concrete and digging up our roads. But in the long term, not only would it be a more pleasant living situation for those of us living here and a pleasant travel situation for those traveling, it would also be.
Twenty seconds.
And I think in all of these questions and in most questions that will face the county council. Climate change and the environment will be embedded in there somewhere. So in addressing every issue, we need to think, how is it going to affect our environment? And I think that this bike path expansion would be a fantastic idea. I would support it.
Thank you very much. Wally Nishimura grew up on the east side of Kauai. Currently resides in Anahola and is happily married with four children. He currently serves our island community by working in the healthcare industry as the Regional Safety Officer and Environmental Services Superintendent. Question, what are innovative and structural ways the county can promote the purchase of locally-produced food?
Thank you very much, Just Hawaii Coalition, for the opportunity with this forum in light of COVID-19. I'd like to just address the young people viewing this right now. As the youngest person running for Kauai County Council for the second election in a row. I understand why you think that Kauai is turning in for tourists and not locals. And I'm running to change that. I need your help. I need to get involved. I need you to vote. Let's make the difference. We're not going anywhere. As far as the question, you know, coming from the private sector, in my experience in that with hotels. I'd like to build a bridge and connect our local produce to like the large big box properties. That, you know, promote farm-to-table meals with tourists and would be able to support our local farmers. I know some really good people out in Kikaha that are trying to get their produce out to the Hyatt and some other big hotels. And unfortunately, right now, tourism is down and, you know, they're depending on us to do that. But getting out to the large tourism industry areas and restaurants is what I'd like to focus on for that.
Thank you. Rory Parker is a part-time writer and a full-time housewife who lives in Kapaa, Kauai. He loves spearfishing and thinks that the reopen protesters are a bunch of selfish, shortsighted and misinformed goons. Question, what is the county's role in preserving and restoring historically significant cultural sites?
I forgot that I wrote that. That caught me off guard. I mean, it's the county's job to restore and preserve cultural sites. You know, it, it's, that's a tough, tough topic for me to really, really, you know, sink my teeth into. Because I'm a highly transplant and, you know, as far as like a deep connection to this place, I, I don't have it. You know, I love Kauai. I love the people. I love how much I've been welcomed here. And I'm proud that the community, you know, made me a part of it. So I, I, I think that, you know, it's unavoidable for me to sometimes not really appreciate how important, you know, those things are to the people. Who, you know, that this is their homeland. So, yeah, I mean, it's pretty simple. It's the county's job. Like, the county should be doing it. Like, what, what else does, does it exist for? You know, our government is to, you know, protect things that are important to the people who live here. And that's important stuff. So, yeah, I mean, that's, that's really all I got, because that's all I got.
Thank you. Clint Tiago Senior is a carpenter who works with private businesses to build homes, both residential and commercial. He is an ordinary citizen and thrives on helping others in need. Question, are there steps you would take to restore our water systems to farmers and Hawaiian homelands? One moment, Clint. Let's unmute you. Do you see a prompt on your screen that says unmute yourself? Clint, you'll have to unmute yourself. On the bottom left-hand corner, you'll see a microphone icon. And if you click that, perfect.
What's the question again, please?
Sure. Are there steps you would take to restore our water systems to farmers and Hawaiian homeland?
Well, we have to dig more wells and catch more, give you rains and and more drilling, catch more water and and help them though. And we get system in the water department. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And I just wanted to also clarify that Just Transition Hawaii does not have subordinates. We are an egalitarian collective with no hierarchies and no subordinates. Thank you candidates for your thoughtful answers. And now round two will focus on diversifying the economy, finances and housing. We will start with Luke Emslin and work through the names in the same order. And I will also not be saying thank you. We're gonna move through this in the interest of time. Luke Emslin, question, what are your plans to develop Kauai's new economy? How do you envision the economy of the future in contrast to the economy of last year?
Great question. You know, I think that's the question on everybody's mind right now. You know, my own personal hope from a, from a big picture is that we're gonna move away from, you know, service sector-oriented economy. We're gonna move away from a consumer-oriented economy and move into, you know, creation, building, growing. I personally have a small company. We build our rigor canoes. And, you know, started by my two closest friends from Kauai High, we always wanted to build it on, have this company be on Kauai. The company ended up on Oahu because there's so many barriers to try and doing business on Kauai, you know, access to materials, to warehouse space. Everything kind of gets sucked up in the vortex of tourism, right? So a lot of our manufacturing spaces are small, you know, they're doing granite countertops and custom cabinets, you know, and you can't find a big enough space to do real manufacturing. And then, you know, also just the nature of tourism, you know, we don't wanna build a, say, a warehouse in a green space because a tourist doesn't wanna see that. You know, and I think so as we move away from tourism by necessity here, we're gonna have to focus more on, on what we can actually create here. And then how to actually do that is, is obviously the hard part of this, this question. Office of Economic Development has, has great grants, you know, there's things like, you know, say, looking at industrial zoning in some places to encourage more industrial space for, for building things. I think charging more to tourists when they do come so that we can get the, you know, we were clearly overcapacity for tourists for years before COVID and we gotta make sure that we don't get back to that point. And part of that is ensuring that we are attracting tourists who are gonna be spending lots of money. And ways that we can do that is say, like, charging for parking at our beach parks. So we get more value, more value from the tourists that we do have more money to put into other sectors that need the help. And, and yeah, that's my own broad vision for the future here. Thank you.
Richard Fukushima, question, some elderly Kauai residents lost their main source of income by making home stays illegal while many TBR homes were grandfathered in. What's your reaction?
To me, it's something that inevitable and cannot be helped. Because like all the old people here, they rely on retirement income and like social security. And yet they have large, large properties which they cannot expand and build on a zone, on a housing so they can get some rental income for local people and not for, as a vacation rental. You know, vacation rentals are okay, but they should leave the vacation rentals to the hotels and not deal with the local environment, I mean, local people. Give the local people a chance to grow on their own. So that like Dr. Bulisun said, Kauai is, Kauai is not for us, it's for the, for the tourists. We have to save our property for the elderly so that they can pass it on to the next generation and the next generation. Right now, I'm living with a family of, we have four different generations in my household. So, but I don't have a DVR or a rental. We just have my family. Because of the cost of, high cost of living and housing. My family cannot afford to buy new, new affordable housing, which is in the six-digit income and higher.
Twenty seconds.
Okay.
Does that conclude your statement, Mr. Fukushima? Okay. Ed Justice, question, what about the county acquiring distressed properties or foreclosures and abandoned commercial buildings to add to affordable housing, long-term rentals and emerging business ventures?
Sounds like a great idea to me. I know, for instance, after Hurricane Aniki, the Waimea Theater. That property ended up being acquired by the county. And so what the county did is that they purchased the land and then they participated, I believe they participated in the rebuilding of the structure. And then they leased the structure out to the nonprofit theater that runs that. And so that's actually worked really, really well for quite a long time. I think that's something that the county definitely can do and I would totally support that. I think we can also work with the state to try to do the same thing. For instance, in Hana Pepe, on the other side of the bridge, we have loads of properties that are actually owned by the state. And they have been sitting there and sitting there since Hurricane Aniki. There hasn't been any initiative to make anything happen with them. So I think we could partner with the state, try to create, I guess, opportunity zones. And we could do that in all of our small communities. For me, I'm more about, let's revitalize what we have. Let's maximize the potential of what we have in our communities, make our communities really proud again. They, these are all bustling, amazing communities. And anytime I talk to folks, they always tell me stories. Oh, I remember this shop that was over here. It was so great and we can have that again and we should have that.
Arul Kanashiro, question, what are ways that Kauai might be able to address and make available more affordable housing on Kauai?
Yeah, housing, I think, has always been an issue as long as I've been running, I think even prior to me running. Housing is always one of the top issues for Kauai. And, you know, recently you've seen a lot of movement towards trying to incentivize housing, trying to make housing easier, trying to break some of the barriers for housing. Some of the things you see is that we've made it easier to do multifamily housing or attach single-family houses. Which, you know, and providing people with the opportunity to build houses together rather than separate. Help save costs because you're bringing infrastructure to one facility, you're sharing a wall, you're sharing a roof, you know. So that's one way the county's tried to ease up and provide opportunities for people to build. Also, recently passed an ARU, additional rental unit. Which allows people to add a rental unit to their existing building or ADU or ADU, yeah, existing building. And, you know, that unit has to be eight hundred square feet or smaller. It can have a kitchen, can have a bathroom. And again, you know, there are, we also passed additional legislation to provide some type of subsidy for permitting and for water to break some of the cost barriers in creating those extra units. You know, other things we've done is increased density in our town core area right here in Lihui to try and incentivize housing. You know, a lot of times developers just aren't incentivized to build or anyone's not really incentivized to build. Increasing the density hopefully makes their numbers work better. Also increasing the density creates smaller units, which, you know, we're not planning to increase density and have people build mega mansions. We're having them increase density on the same, same square footage, which creates smaller units. Which in turn should be more affordable for the community. And again, you know, we're, we're following the general plan. We're trying to push housing into areas that have infrastructure. We're trying to prevent urban sprawl, you know, putting housing in our main town core areas. Brings housing towards jobs. It reduces traffic. Hopefully will reduce people's commute times because they're actually living where they work. And, you know, those are just a bunch of things we're trying to do for housing. Obviously, there's no like silver bullet. There's no one policy that's gonna.
Twenty seconds.
Issue, but, you know, we just gotta keep chipping away at it and, you know, little by little, hopefully we can try to stimulate or incentivize some type of housing around the island. Thank you.
Kipukai Koalii, what steps might the county take in addressing wealth inequality? Who might you call upon for ideas, direction and practical expertise? And we need to unmute?
Sorry. Wealth inequality, I mean, the council, the county, that our primary role in that is what we pay our employees. And I've always been someone who fought for the lowest paid employees, you know, and to value their work. And also to make sure that they can make a living. I mean, the cost of living is so high here. The gap between the lowest paid and the highest paid is, is large. Every time the salary commission would come before our council, I would work, you know, I would argue against the large raises to the high paying positions. I really don't know why anybody on this island working for our county would need to earn over $100,000. Our average citizens, many, many, many of our citizens are struggling to get by on service industry jobs that maybe only pay them like 20,000 or 30,000. So the gap is incredibly large. It's important that we continue to support labor unions and their fight for increase to the minimum wage and you know, fair conditions at work. I don't know, I think the county just needs to be more cognizant of, of how we pay our workers and maybe be an example of not letting that gap between the lowest paid and the highest paid gets too large.
Wally Nishimura, what can be done to ensure that Kauai doesn't become primarily a place for vacation homes and absentee landowners?
Well, we need to enforce and support the planning department to enforce illegal housing. I live on a hole on Hawaiian homeland. I don't have that issue here with tourism. But, uh, you know, a lot of other places on the island does, Honolulu, the west side. And it's just enforcing it and making sure people aren't doing things they shouldn't be doing.
Jackie Nelson, question. Considering the substantial federal funds that are expended and the potential spread of COVID-19, would you support a call to cancel RIMPAC this year?
Um, yes, I think that would be a good idea at this time. It's going to be a long road to recovery. We are, we are really in a big hole. And here on Kauai, we never even had a wave. We still need to prepare for possibly potentially getting a wave when tourism comes back in. This is a little outside of my wheelhouse. I don't have a military background. I don't know how much RIMPAC costs us, but I would most definitely consider doing something else with those funds. I think our businesses are struggling, even the ones that are reopening now. I've talked to a lot of business owners. They're saying they don't know if they can afford to remain open. And in terms of businesses that have closed that I know won't be reopening, I've talked to some of those business owners, a couple of which I know are, are having to leave the island. And they've said the same thing. Yep, they could probably reopen right now, but they don't know if they'd be able to afford to remain open. And we need to, like, as a council, we need to make sure that there is a business friendly climate here so that our businesses, you know, our local businesses can thrive and support our island community and bring those jobs back. And it's, it's not going to be easy. So something like, like RIMPAC, I think that would be, I think it would be a good idea to not participate this year. Thank you.
Rory Parker, how can you as a council member involve more residents in the county decision-making and actions?
Well, you know, one thing I actually would really like to do, and this goes back to, I think, Mr. Eveslin brought it up, is enforcing our existing TBR laws is, you know, I was trying to find a list of legal TBRs on the island. And, and, you know, for the record, I think that Airbnb is a blight on pretty much every community in which it's present. And in order to find the list of the legal rentals, it takes some doing. It does exist. And, and one thing I would really, really like to do is improve access to those listings, allow people to cross-reference them against ones that are, you know, the ones, ones in their neighborhood, ones that are causing problems, and then set up a citizen reporting a system because you know, I, I feel for, for young kids growing up here, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm a, I'm a middle-aged man. I turned 40 in a little over a month. But I grew up in a, in a really crowded beach town that I got priced out of. And then I moved to Kauai and now I'm a force of exactly what it is that, um, that, that, that really kicked me out of my hometown. And, you know, it, it's, it's, it's hard to do on Kauai, I understand, because, you know, this is a small island. We're a community, we know each other and we're going to be, you know, going after people that we don't necessarily want to, want to bum out, but, um, you know, it's the, it's the, it's the calling out the people who are doing wrong because people don't come to Kauai to stay in an Airbnb. They don't come here to stay in a, in a TBR. They come here because of all of the other resources. They come here because of the beaches, because of the parks, because of just what a, what a great place this is.
20 seconds.
And then as far as other stuff is, my phone number's on there, call me. I'm a pretty open dude. I'm easy to deal with and I'm a little bit weird, but generally cooperative.
Glenn Thiago Senior, as property values skyrocket, driving up property taxes, what can be done to help families from being priced out of their home and land? One moment, let's unmute you.
Okay, okay. Repeat that question again, ma'am.
Sure thing. As property values skyrocket, driving up property taxes, what can be done to help families from being priced out of their home and land?
Well, we have to find ways to help people that move around the island. So don't tax all the people that come in like us and that's it, you know, we find ways to, don't tax the, thank you.
Jade Vailali Ali Bathan, what sectors, organizations, community members should be involved in planning and executing an economic recovery plan? What is the council's role?
Well, I am Jade Vailali Ali, formerly of Vailali Ali Boat Tours with 44 years in the tourism industry. I don't think that there is any way that we can get away from tourism or no longer have it be our economy. It's who we are. It's what people want. They want to come here. There are many beautiful places all over the world and they come to Kauai not just for our beauty and our beaches, but for our culture and our people. And in COVID-19 and the crisis that we've gone through, we've recognized and had a chance to, to kind of regroup. And, you know, maybe investigate the way we, we see things and look at to how we want to move forward. You know, it said, if you should be the change that you want seen in the world, well, we have to enforce that change and, and diversify who we are as an island. I, I understand that. And I think that there are ways that we could do that that are within the parameters of Hawaii and that would be, you know, cohesive to our native cultural ways that are so pristine and precious that I think we have to hold on to that for all that we have. And yet that we can market ourselves in an economy that would still allow us to be the beautiful Kauai that we know and love and the Iha'au that we know and love. And so we have to remember that, I think, as we move forward and just remember who we are and where we've come from. I don't think that there's any possible way that we're going to go back to Hawaii of old. And, you know, even though that's, you know, that would be nice because we've experienced that right now in this COVID time. You know, no traffic after nine o'clock, that was brilliant. And I champion our mayor, I aloha him for that. And the way that he led us and, and all of the initiatives that he brought about, it was a beautiful time to just regroup. And we, you go to the beaches now and you see, you see marine life flourishing and it's just that is the Hawaii that we have to fight for and we have to hold on to our economy and we have to branch out. We can do it together. We have to come together and do it with aloha.
Addison Bulisun, would you be willing to investigate county, state-owned banks that are operating in other parts of the country as a means of increasing the county's financial well-being?
Aloha Kakao, this is Dr. Addison Bulisun, your Kauai County Council candidate. Welcome everyone who's jumping on all the 165 people on. This is amazing. This question is very interesting. I, when I got this, this question, I was looking it through and I did my research, looking through the, the country of what county governments, what state governments have done this. There is quite a few that has done it. It takes a quite a bit of work, actually. As I, I've been investigating this process, the idea behind it is really to try to figure out how we can create our county government to be more solvent and be able to protect itself from really hard things. You know, the reality is that to take a broad and, I want to say crazy idea at this moment, right now, to try to adapt that, say, into 2021 or 2022, if I get elected, it's not that too crazy. I mean, the reality is that there's things that we got to look at to figure out how we can figure out the challenge that we're going to have with the budget, especially if TAT tax is going to be addressed in the, the process of COVID and GET tax is going to be affected by COVID and probably property tax. And so I believe that with this question about looking at ways to find more, find more solutions for us as a county to, to be more, I guess, reliant to what's going on, it's a good idea, but it's, it's a tough one. It's going to require a lot of resources. So, you know, with this question, I think about all the other ideas that we can look at to try to create a better sustainable county government. And we've been doing really good at balancing budget. That's just part of the deal. So I just want to echo some of the things that Arrow said about the ideas of housing. I want to echo what Luke has been saying about, about all the ideas that we want to implement. I think there's a lot of ideas that are coming out right now. And I think my greatest strength right now as a potential candidate, a potential county, county council member is probably collaborating on these ideas. And I know in the community right now, you have a lot of ideas. So please reach out. Let's talk story. Let's put them in the message here. Let's go. Let's go to work.
Donovan Kabibi, where does the county have opportunities to encourage diversifying our island economy?
Good question. Boy, where do we go? You know, agriculture is automatic, easy go-to to diversify. I'd love to see our county work towards creating a really robust industrialized center where we're creating opportunity for manufacturing to happen and, and development of future technologies. There's no, there's no reason why we couldn't really make an impact globally with science, technology, especially regarding agricultural sciences because of our three growing seasons. Waste management is another opportunity that we could move towards to diversify our economy. Allowing our local entrepreneurs to have the opportunity to apply for tax incentives, allowing our local residents to build and develop businesses that serve our community instead of serving just the tourism industry. And I think if we just kind of focus on, on what we as residents can do to serve each other, we'll find many paths towards diversifying our economy, but it's going to be depending on our council will work together to create a friendly environment for local businesses and to encourage off-island investments to move into our community and to help us build these multiple business sectors such as waste management, manufacturing, agricultural sciences and food production. So I'd like to see us, I'd like to see us look towards not just serving our local economy, but setting us up in a place that will allow us to serve the global economy as well through these types of actions and, and economic diversifications. Thank you.
Mason Chalk, what are your plans for accommodating those without housing and reopening Salt Pond and Lydgate to all?
Mahalo for the question. You know, I think right now that is a huge issue on our island as it is across the state. We've been talking about how we can address our houseless issue for
Sorry, Mason, you are muted. Can you unmute, please?
Hi, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I got, I got muted there somehow. But, um, this is a, a huge issue for our island and our state. And, you know, we've been looking at all of the different reasons. It's a complex situation when it comes to the houseless on our island. You know, whether it be mental health or drug abuse or just running away from the law in general, financially, our people are struggling. And so, you know, the county, I feel like, has taken an active role even before the pandemic to appropriate funds that came through the, to the state, through the Ohana zoning, to start the project at Kualoke. Those are going to be units specifically directed towards this issue. And I'd love to see that those happen regionally. It's happening right now at, in our central region, but why not have one on the east or north shore and also on the west side so that we can transition our houseless community. And then in addition to that, you know, the recent CARES Act fund that the council just passed today with, with the mayor identifies a portion to go towards tiny houses. And this, this budget will go far in also transitioning our houseless. I'm a huge believer in the Housing First Initiative. I think that that's where it all starts as a foundation for our community and for our people. We need to get our families back into homes so that they can feel safe and that they can feel nurtured and be productive people in our community. Of course, along with that, some of the other issues that I mentioned, we need to increase our capacity in supporting mental health issues and also supporting people through drug rehabilitation. And so, you know, it's not a one answer solution. And, you know, I think that the council and the county of Kauai has done as much as it can. And we, there's a lot more to do. So we need to get back to work. Is that an, Addison Bulisun said.
Alicia Cowden, how might food security and self-sufficiency help Kauai to protect residents against future pandemics?
Well, that's something that I live out in my regular life. I think it makes a very big difference. I have what I call a yard in, in my one-third of an acre property where my house is. I have so much abundance in sustainable food, including chickens and fish. You know, I don't eat my chickens, but I eat their eggs. And what has been evident from, to me for about the 10 years that I've owned it is when you are food self-sufficient, particularly with like neighborhood agriculture, so much can be grown here and used to be grown here. This is how we used to live here. And when you have plenty of food at home, you don't need to go out. It helps to create that social distancing that we've been asked to have. It helps to create, even as importantly, a solid and a healthy nutritional diet. When we eat whole foods that we know isn't contaminated in any way, that helps keep our own body resilience very strong, being able to share with your neighbors, be able to help is such a possibility. And I think anytime that we've seen these disasters that are, you know, weather related, you see how much people reach out. And, and our ancestors here of Hawaii, their crops are designed for this. There's so many crops that grow in a way where it's underground. You have all these corns. Their crops are designed for this. There's so many crops that grow in a way where it's underground. You have all these corns that grow. Like kalo and uhi and cassava. There's so much appropriate food. And it comes back so fast, even the uala, the sweet potato, it's. I remember when I first planted it, how stunned I was at how possible it is for us to take care of ourselves. So I have become somewhat of an evangelist. That idea. So food self sufficiency, let's create it. We can create it. All over the place. And yes, I think it helps us if we have a return to any kind of pandemic.
Mike Dandren, what are your plans as a council member to help Kauai become more resilient to disasters and have greater independence and self reliance?
Aloha and yes, Mike Dandren and my person Ted to make sure that I announce my name. So for those that are just joining us. For Kauai to be more resilient, we need to, like I said earlier, we need to look at the ancient Hawaiians. How they were able to use the apua as a self sustaining environment from a mountain to ocean. Kauai, if we were to look at it as a self sustaining apua, one island. Where the, the community would support the local farmers by using their, their. Purchasing power to purchase local produce, that would. We could use, it would support the economy. Now, basically what I'm trying to say is, is if we, if we can have a community commitment. To commit to our farmers that are out there working hard and farming, farming is not a fun. I mean, it's fun. It's a passion, but it doesn't make a lot of money. And our farmers are working out there all the time. And then they have to figure out how to market their, their produce and then they have to figure out how to deliver it. And what I was, what I would like to see is if we could. Have like a, a virtual food hub, kind of like Maui. And I want to invite anybody that's watching to go to Mauifoodhub.com. Because what they have there and it's a, the wheel's already been, been designed. So all we had to do is copy what they're doing. Where the farmers can bring all their produce to one location and we can come in and shop whatever products that they have for that, that day. By, and that would promote environmental stewardship. And basically what we're asking for. Is community commitment to our farmers. And if we can commit our community to buying one every week instead of going to Costco or going to. Safeway, buy, go to this food hub and purchase the local food first. And then whatever else you need, you can go there. If we can keep the money on island, that is going to help our, our independence. And we don't have to be worried about where the dollar is coming from. Let me tell you something. The. When, when, when you spend a dollar at a business that does not have local roots, that dollar goes off island. If you take the same dollar and you're, and you spend it at a local, and I'm not talking food. Farmers market, I'm talking about a food hub where it has multiple.
Thank you. The time was up. Billy DaCosta, what would you do to increase the county's financial well being that would have an impact during your term?
Hello, Billy DaCosta. You know, I've been hearing a lot of good collaboration answers on many good topics, but um. Unless you walk, you talk and you live that, that lifestyle, it's hard to integrate what it's. We got. Couple of decades to revamp our economy through the county and state. We have Kiki coming out of high school that we, we want to go away to college and. Come back as a successful nurse or doctor or teacher. Well, what about that successful farmer? You guys talk about farming and how our county can diversify into a better economy. Well, well, how are we going to build that? Upcoming students out of high school to be the farmer, to be the construction worker, to be the welder, plumber. You know, we've created a whole bunch of service oriented workers out of high school. That can only put an umbrella in a drink and put linen in a closet and carry bags to hotel room. If they're not the doctor, lawyer, nurse. So I'm telling you guys, you gotta revamp our whole system. To diversify into a solid economy, like keeping the money like Dan Durant said, keep the money locally so it circulates. And we become more powerful that our money stays home. And our children, generations to come in the future, are not going to hit another pandemic. It happened with SARS. It can happen again and we need to be ready. We need to farm to live. We need to have the county work with state officials, get back state land and have people farm to live on that land. People can live in single dwelling plantation houses that we can take away restrictions and they can farm to live. The trouble with farming is we don't have enough local people farming. It's okay to farm lettuce and tomatoes in our backyard, but how does it affect the whole economy? The hub on Maui, that should be a revamp of our co-op system that we had thirty, forty years ago. Where people can own the products they bring to the supermarket that we are a co-op, we own the supermarket. And we shop there and not just lettuce and tomatoes, but goat cheese, goat milk, dairy products like. Homemade ice cream, milk, grass fed beef hamburger. We are importing eighty five percent of our food. We need to have things in place and that's what I plan to do in my next two years, put things in place. So in twenty to thirty, forty years, my grandchildren can live in a sustainable economy, not dependent on tourism. And we create workers, whether they're farmers, welders, carpenters, plumbers. They are a highly skilled service, not putting umbrellas in drinks and depending on tourism and putting linen in closets. Thank you very much.
Deborah Lynn De Silva Carvero, how do we move away from the mono economy of tourism into greener, more sustainable income sources?
Do you repeat the question?
Of course. How do we move away from the mono economy of tourism into greener, more sustainable income sources?
Well, like Billy said, instead of. Our DLNR. Going out there and asking to. Eradicate our live herds of goats and pigs and what, you know, what my new is out there. Put them in a different area, keep moving them around. So we do have. Our own to live by without worrying about getting it from somewhere else. But my main question is, even if we went and dealt with a hub like everybody's talking about. How are the kupunas and the elderly and the sick going to be able to get to that place? I mean, we gotta have an outsource for them to get there. I mean. We as a community gotta work together to think about.
Thank you, candidates. Let's take a breath. Round three focuses on social and environmental issues. We will start this time with Clint Diago Senior and in reverse alphabetical order. This is our last and final round. Way to go, folks. Clint Diago Senior, your question is, are you in support of county council representation by district? Rather than at large? Why or why not?
Can you repeat the question again, ma'am?
Of course. Are you in support of county council representation? By district rather than at large? Why or why not?
Yes, I support by large. So they can represent. Whatever tasks and duties they do. And. And the smaller district, we have to do it second. Thank you.
Rory Parker, what are Kauai's primary vulnerabilities and risks in relation to the changing climate and extreme weather?
Oh, wow. So, I mean, it's sea level rise is, is, is obviously, you know, I think the first and foremost that comes to my mind, but also. You know, extreme weather. So. Growing up in Southern California and I've lived in Hawaii for thirteen, fourteen years now, I'm still not used to weather and I'm terrified of thunder. And it's, it's a strange thing for me. All I can think of is a, is a, is a change to zoning laws. Is that the right, rather permitting? Because it's, it's just like. Houses are gonna have to be built back further. They're gonna have to be built up higher. They're gonna have to be built more robust. As far as like economic disruption. That's, that's a real problem because I, I can't imagine, you know, people who went through Iniki and being cut off from the mainland. And, you know, while I, I also see, while I love the idea of Kauai being totally self sufficient. I think maybe I just lack the imagination to see how that's an actual possibility. So I guess it's just, you know, try to build a more robust infrastructure. You know, make sure that new, new buildings and renovated buildings will be able to withstand, you know, things that are, that are, that are predicted. And then, you know, squeeze tourism as hard as we can to make enough money to have something put away for, you know, tough times because, you know, tourism. Tourism is a cash cow, man. And I think that, that, that it needs to be milked more. I think that taxes on. I think the TAT needs to be drastically increased. I think that rental cars need to have their registration fees substantially increased. And, and I think that all that money goes into the community and, you know. If the community coffers are full. We're in a better place to deal with unforeseen circumstances like a worldwide pandemic. I mean. Yeah. So I, I hope that's a helpful answer.
Wally Nishimura, what is Kauai doing for suicide prevention? And would you work to expand, support or remodel such programs? One moment, we still have Rory Parker. One moment. Would you like me to repeat the question, Wally?
No, thank you. Appreciate it. You know, everybody, we, we, people know about the hotline. You know, locally for us here, it's. It's been the. Effect of COVID, you know, a lot of people are depressed. They've lost their jobs. Worrying about food. Unsure of the future. And, you know, we've, we've lost people. We've lost people to suicide and not to COVID. And it's a serious issue that needs to get addressed. For me personally, I reach out to my friends, to people I work with. I check in. I make sure they're okay. I know a lot of people that work in hotels, a lot of my friends that don't have jobs. My mother doesn't have a job. And I think for us, it's just being there for one another. You know, Kauai is one big family. That's how we treat each other. It's how we should continue to treat each other. And as a councilman, I think, you know, we all should be available. If somebody needs help, if someone needs to talk to somebody, call me. Text me, message me, email me. I'll be there to listen to you. And I think that's the best way to do it for all of us.
Jackie Nelson, what is your position on using large parcels of state land on Kauai for chemical testing? And do you see alternatives that might benefit Kauai ventures and the environment and keep more money on Kauai?
Thank you for the question. I'm making some notes here. Using large parcels, parcels of state land for chemical testing. And what are some alternatives? Well, I can't say loudly and strongly enough that I'm not. For using large parcels of state land for chemical testing. I don't like that idea at all. And I think that almost any idea would be better. I think if we've got, got land that we can use. Why not do, say, agrotourism, you know? CBD is a big deal right now. Why don't we, why don't we grow hemp? We've got a year round growing season. We could grow hemp. We could have. CBD processing facilities. Not only would it provide good jobs and be timely and be. You know, good for us agriculturally. It'd also benefit the community. Yeah. I think that one way to solve the problem of, hey, Kauai is only for tourists, it needs to be more for locals. Is to have more projects like that, agrotourism projects. People don't just need to come here. To stay in big hotels. If we had something, and even going back to the, the question from earlier about a. Recycling and. And. Like a waste to energy facility. If we had something cutting edge and innovative like that on Kauai, people would come out to see it and copy it. And I'm a, I'm a, a big fan of using our land for farming. And that could still fit in with us making plenty of money in the tourism sector. I, I don't like the idea of experimenting with chemicals in this delicate ecosystem. I, I. Can't say that loudly enough. Thank you for the question.
Kipukai Koali, what is the role of native Hawaiian governance, culture and people in this current moment? And how do you see the council working with those communities moving forward? Kipukai, if you could please click the unmute. Thank you.
Sorry. I think you're asking about the sovereignty movement, perhaps, and maybe. Mauna Kea. My, my stance on the native Hawaiian governance issue is that I support, obviously, I'm running for county council. I support the government within the government model. I am a. Advocate for homesteaders, for people on the waitlist, for. You know, Department of Hawaiian Homelands. I think there's a lot of work to be done all across some, the different sectors, the different issues. For the native Hawaiian people. I also think that it's super important that the state of Hawaii, that all of our counties. Make sure we're doing all we can to support our native Hawaiian people because we are Hawaii. I mean, we are the reason, our culture, our aloha, that our number one industry tourism even exists. The support needs to come in providing access to land and access to water so that our, our people can. Be rehabilitated as our prince Kohio intended. Right now, homestead beneficiaries are working to make the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. Do better. I think they've had a hundred years of failure and I'm hoping that the legislature will help us. We have some legislation before them with called Keep Hawaiian Lands in Hawaiian Hands. And they, they basically bring more democracy to the beneficiaries. And it removes the chair of the commission from also being the director of the department. That should be separated.
Twenty seconds.
And then it clarifies language and it also helps with. Foreclosure prevention. I actually passed a resolution with Councilmember Cowden. To improve that at the HHL. There's a lot of work to do when it comes to native Hawaiian issues and governance. But we're definitely moving in the right direction. There's a lot of good things happening.
Earl Kanashiro, what is your position on trash incineration, AKA waste to energy technology? And is it appropriate for Kauai?
Okay, thank you for that question again, Earl Kanashiro. You know, my position, as it's always been with our solid waste issue is I'm open to anything, you know, that is. Cost effective and environmentally friendly. You know, we have a major issue with our trash. I mean, we're very unique. We're an island. We need to take care of our own trash. We can't. Ship it anywhere. You know, if you're in the US somewhere, you can haul it, you can train it, you can truck it to another state that. Processes trash. We're here, we're on our own, we're unique, we need to take care of our own trash. You know, we've looked at options to taking care of trash and, you know, we really haven't found anything that's been financially viable. You know, I've also, we've always talked about, you know, incinerating. You know, I've also, I we've always talked about, you know, incineration of trash. And, you know, the thing that I hear is that we just don't have the critical mass for it. So the financials don't work out. You know, Oahu has it right now. They have H power. And even on Oahu, believe it or not, they sometimes don't even have enough trash to fill their incinerator. And it's costed them a lot of money. They had an audit done a few years ago where they actually had to pay millions of dollars for not providing enough trash to the incinerator. Now you look at how much trash comes out of Oahu versus Kauai. You know, I I just don't think there's a viable option for trash incineration. But we, you know, we do need other options. We do need other ways to deal with our trash, you know. No matter what we do, it costs money. I think solid waste is probably subsidized almost twelve million dollars a year by the general fund, you know. So our fees for trash doesn't cover the operation. You know, it's it's a difficult issue. What are we gonna do with our new landfill? I don't know. I mean, it looks like we're probably gonna look to the west side and maybe try to expand the area we're on now. But, you know, it's an issue that keeps getting keeps getting pressed, you know. It's it's an issue that is never gonna go away. We're always gonna have to figure out.
Twenty seconds.
Thank you.
Ed Justice. From your perspective, what are the biggest issues facing the native Hawaiian communities? And what could the county do in addressing those issues?
I've heard mainly two things, the folks that I've talked to. One is about housing, right? That's always like a major issue. The other one is about preserving the Hawaiian cultural sites and respecting Hawaiian cultural sites. And I think what we have to keep in mind is, like one of the other candidates said, Hawaii culture is one of the main reasons that people come to Hawaii, right? So those are things that have to be protected, no matter what. I got, there was a phone call, I was talking to somebody and they were having issues with someone bulldozing over taro fields, right? And that's something that should be protected. That's that's critical. It's part of our history, part of the culture of Hawaii. And those are really important things. I think if we can make sure to focus on that and to listen to their needs, I mean, that's what we're here for. Thank you.
Richard Fukushima. What do you think is Kauai's biggest lesson from this pandemic? And how do we learn from it moving forward? One moment, Mr. Fukushima, you are still muted.
Okay.
There we go. Perfect.
Okay. Yeah, the biggest lesson from this pandemic is the leadership on Kauai. Through the mayor and his team of experts, Kauai has at least amount of COVID nineteen cases. Being so, we should not let our guard down, but to continue vigilance, faith, hope and standing side by side. We can start moving forward by sharing our love and resources that we have in abundance with those who are less fortunate.
Luke Ebsen. What options might you explore to significantly improve Kauai's broadband and voice communication systems?
That was a question I wasn't expecting here. To be honest, it's not something that I put a whole lot of thought in. We expand Kauai's broadband. I mean, largely from the county, it's it's not necessarily our Quiliana here. You know, I know that we're pretty dependent on one or two lines that cross to Oahu. And we've seen when one of those goes out. You know, like our lights go out here and we descend into chaos. So how do we ensure resiliency? I'm gonna pivot here a little bit because I have no great answer to how to ensure broadband. And I'm gonna just choose another question, which would be one environmental issue would you prioritize as most pressing on Kauai? And I will say climate change, since this is a forum on climate change here. I feel like I gotta answer one climate change question. By far, our biggest environmental issue, it will impact every other environmental issue magnified in all tenfold from from sea level rise to ocean acidification and coral bleaching to mosquitoes going to higher altitudes and and killing off our, you know, native birds. And so, you know, our primary goal, and I think every decision that we make here has to take in into account the necessity of getting to zero carbon by by twenty fifty. And I wish I had a good way to tie that back to broadband, but I but I do not. So sorry for my terrible pivot here. Sorry, I mean, the reason for the pivot is really that there's 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 not a whole lot there for the county. I know five G is a big growing issue on on Kauai. A little hard for me to dive into that controversy at the moment. Though, you know, having faster internet speeds during a time when we're also reliant on our internet would be a would be would be nice. So anyway, that's my that's my terrible pivot job. Thanks.
Deborah Lynn de Silva Carvero. What environmental issues would you prioritize as most pressing on Kauai? And what steps would you propose to address them?
Environmental issues, we have a lot of environmental issues here. One is chemicals burning to our waters. Killing our our creatures, our life. You know, coral reefs and stuff like that. Another one is people going into the fields and leaving their trash or damaging other people's properties like the Hawaiian salt sea bays. I mean, so I would, for all issues on Kauai, I would get like for the COVID the quarantine day quarantine. They should have put together a board for every island, a board of ways and means to go out there and track the people and make sure they're following. And I would do same for our environmental issues. I would have a board, go out there and track it. That would be their only responsibility. Thank you.
Mike Dandren. What can we learn from the killing of George Floyd and how communities respond to crisis?
You know, this is a tough one. You know, Hawaii is the first state to to come up and and require body cams on our on our police officers. And I think it's it's really important that if they have the body cams, they should turn them on. Because if they're not turning them on, then they're, you can't, you know, you don't have anything. And I think I think that should be a requirement no matter what. That being said, you know, this past Saturday, we had the the demonstration up on the north shore with the paddle out in Honolulu, and then we had the the demonstration down on Rice Street for Black Lives Matter. And you know, when I saw the police officers there and participating in the in the demonstration. I mean, that, you know, it just shows you that, you know, on Kauai, we're we're a community and we're all kind of, we're almost related to each other. I mean, we're, you know, then the mainland, you're six six degrees separation over here, we're two degrees separation. So anything that we do is gonna affect somebody we know. And so, you know, the mainland has their stuff. I I'm more concerned about Kauai. This is the most important island to me. And so how I feel is that our K B D, they had, it was a peaceful demonstration, they supported it. And, you know, Kauai, I I wasn't even worried, you know, people were concerned about looters and that kind of stuff. There was none of that. It was so peaceful. And, you know, the key word was peaceful. So, you know, right on Kauai, right on for the people that put that together. And I'm really proud of our Kauai Police Department and our new cap, new chief, Chief Ray Buck. Thank you.
Billy DeCosta. Will you advocate for a climate action plan for Kauai? And what should that plan cover?
Right now, in diverse questions. But I'm not that diverse on how are we gonna climb, can you? Can you can repeat that question one more time?
Yes, sir. Will you advocate for a climate action plan for Kauai? And what should that plan cover?
Climate action plan. I know we have sea levels rising, polar caps and melting worldwide. Lot of CO2 into the atmosphere, burning holes in the ozone layer. I think it comes more from a federal standpoint. If we as a county and the council, we, the way we deal climate change here, it's pretty much dealing with our trash and dealing with our waste products, solid waste. I really see big factories here in the state that's adding to climate change. I think it's a global issue. So I think I'm I'm gonna be spewing a whole bunch of jargon that doesn't mean anything to anybody out there right now. Because I don't believe our county or even our state has much impact on our climate change. I I would like to address some of our green energy that we're burning trees right now at one of our plants here in Kauai to make alternative energy. It's it's funny that we're doing doing that process because trees do create oxygen. They take carbon dioxide into oxygen. And we use large diesel machines to harvest those trees to burn at a plant. So I'm kind of puzzles me a little bit. I think the bigger picture is how can our company, K I U C, operate more efficiently on our solar farms and some of our hydro plants? And how we can give back to our utility, people that paying their utility bills? We'd love to see K I U C during this quarantine time on some of our electric bills. Because a lot of our landlords with tenants had to give our tenants a break on their rent because they could not pay their rent. Now, if you're a homeowner and you pay the utilities, which is included in the rent, then you have to absorb that cost. I didn't see any of our utility companies giving back during this quarantine time. So how's that for climate change answer? Thank you, Luke, for allowing me to diversify.
Felicia Cowden. What might be done to limit the number of rental cars on Kauai in order to alleviate traffic and reduce pollution?
I'm gonna answer that. I'm gonna try and do two questions because one's a climate change. I want to just acknowledge in our climate vulnerability, our albizia trees are growing like guinea grass. And when it rains, these trees comes down, they get caught in the rivers and they're doing an incredible amount of damage to properties. And all along the banks, we saw even what happened at the Waialua Bridge. We have to somehow work with the state and figure out a way to deal with our trees. Rental cars, I think one thing that can happen with rental cars is that we can have packs of them in the different resorts and the different communities. Have people come from the airport to where they're staying and do hourly rentals and daily rentals. I've actually worked with the rental car companies on this concept. And if we can get people to be renting less, that can help encourage the use of tour buses, like going out to hyena. The more we can get people to grow, go a little bit more as a group to some of these activities. It keeps people out of the cars all the time. And a lot of times those cars will just sit for a day or two while people are on vacation. And so the more that we can have the rentals happen on a on a limited basis, I think that that will will slow that number down. And I think as we come out of this COVID time, we're really gonna need to rethink and be creative how we manage our tourism volume. Do it right, do it kindly, have still some diversity of the visitors. But I think it's been pretty evident that we need less, some, but less. Cars are tied.
Mason Mason Shock. Would you support a public private partnership with a county to draft a climate action plan? If so, what would it look like?
My answer is absolutely. You know, I think that when when taking on such a huge issue like climate change, the only way a small island like ourselves will make a dent is if every single person takes a role in it. And so how do we, the bigger question for me is how do we effectively engage the whole community? That means behavioral change. How do we end up with behavioral change on every level? And to me, that requires a private public partnership. I I could, I could envision a local nonprofit taking the lead as, you know, in between with the community. We already have a state who has committed itself to Aloha Plus Challenge. The county has done and followed suit. But to translate this into specific actions on a daily basis is key in order to change some of these behaviors. And so we need to drive a campaign so that everyone knows from the time they wake up in the morning, by the time they they do their first things in the morning, what it is they're consciously doing affect and work towards the elimination of our greenhouse gases. So I think that it can be done. It's a lot of effort, but I know that their efforts are already beginning and the conversation has started. We just need to get the outreach out there to the rest of the community so that those behaviors can be affected. Thank you.
Donovan Cavibbi. What programs are available for domestic abuse for Kauai residents? And are there ways to improve, expand and monitor these programs that you would advocate for?
Good question, you know. I know that we have several organizations on the island dedicated to supporting folks' needs with regard to to this topic. So it's not really something that I've often had the opportunity to address or an area that I've often worked in. But I I feel like, you know, the fabric of our society is dependent on finding ways to respect each other, all of our needs. And basically, that's the work that we need to do in county council is create these systems that support the needs of our community. And, you know, it's all about finding ways to respect each other, understand the needs of the community, work to fulfill those needs. And, you know, we here in Hawaii, we have a perfect opportunity to look towards people who hold knowledge of ancient wisdom. Hawaiians, the the misconception is that this is an ancient culture. But this is a a modern, living, present culture that holds on to the ancient knowledge of how to live in peace and harmony with not each other, not just each other socially, but with the environment, the natural environment. And so, you know, if we give these, the the native community, the opportunity to lead us into the future, then we'll have the tools we need to be able to restore the Ina so that we can have what is important to us and sustains all that we nurture and cultivate. And this two things, respecting our culture and letting them lead us into the future, working to restore our Ina and addressing all of the environmental issues that we have. These two things alone will open the doors of opportunity for the entirety of our community to prosper economically. And so this is my concern. This is where I'm I'm at. This is where I'm thinking. This is how I want to serve the community. This is the work that I've done traditionally and in the past, and will continue to do and hope to bring this consciousness of of being all inclusive, honoring our and respecting our host culture who has suffered a great deal of disregard here in Hawaii and has struggled to find a place here in their own homeland. And, you know, ha- hold the answers to how to live with the natural environment wholly, completely. And I call this the Ina centric mentality. So if we can incorporate these thoughts and philosophies, I'll allow them to kind of be at the foundation of where we go into the future and how we get into the future. We'll see that the path becomes a lot less daunting and the work becomes a lot simpler. Thank you.
Addison Bulasun. Honolulu City Council has joined the movement to sue the large fossil fuel corporations for Hawaii's expenses in preparing for and adapting to the climate crisis. Should Kauai follow suit and why?
Aloha Kakao, this is Dr. Addison Bulasun. And yes, I believe that would be an ideal situation for what's going on with the world. I mean, the the why is really easy. What what we're facing right now as a a global challenge is that we're we're in climate change and we're looking at our environment and we're trying to take care of as best as possible. But there are forces that we're working against. And those forces are powerful and they need to be in check. And that's one of the powers that we can utilize as a government to represent the people, all of you. powers that we can utilize as a government to represent the people, all of you, all the hundred and fifty-three people watching right now. So that as your representative, part of the the process that we can do is help represent you and make sure that you have a voice in these big, big challenges. And I think that's one of the things we can look at. Um the one piece that I do want to add with that, though, is that we just want to make sure that it's not going to cost the county of Kauai a ton of money. So there's a lot of research that I'm looking towards in this question because it's a really tough one. I my background is in healthcare professional. I'm a doctor of chiropractic. Uh my first degree is in music and I worked all my life here on Kauai as a musician or as a practicing doctor. And so as much as the challenges that are we are faced as a county council, um I'm coming from that point of view, trying to solve these challenges from a holistic view and trying to affect some of these changes. And this is one of those holistic views I think that we can take uh and make a big difference. Now, the question is, will we be successful? And I think the biggest part about that is how much work can we put into it? And so, you know, these last two, three weeks, I've been putting in sixteen to eighteen hours a day studying some of these topics because some of it I just really don't know. And I've been reaching out to every state rep we have, every county department head, um every representative that we have here, all of our community leaders, uh I'm reaching out to you. There's a lot of you and I really appreciate all the work that you're doing. And I'm reaching to all of you right now, all hundred and fifty-four of you and the rest of our community. We need your help. The challenges up ahead is really hard and I really want to work with you to solve these challenges. So if we can just come together, collaborate, work together, and maybe we can get some of these things figured out as soon as possible, so it's not so hard. I'm Dr. Addison. I appreciate all of you. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Jade Waioli Ali Batad, explain how the plastic problem is impacting Kauai? And what action would you initiate or support to address our plastic problem?
Well, when I was young, a long time ago, because I am not the youngest person on this forum tonight. But when I was young, we didn't have bottled water. There's no such thing. You drank it out of a water hose if you were lucky while you were outside of the house playing and not inside the house on your video games, while you were climbing trees or riding bikes. And you came home and your father whistled and you knew you had exactly five minutes to get home. So you had to helle as fast as you could or else you were in trouble. So I think um, you know, we see bottled water all over the place. And I I just think we have to eliminate and start somewhere. I also said that I was never gonna buy uh one of those thirty-dollar hydro flasks for water, and yet I did. And it's my best friend nowadays. So I'm thankful that we have um ways to to store our water that are not in plastic water bottles. And I think we have to do everything we can to eliminate our footprint on our beautiful and blessed garden island of Kauai. Now, you know, these questions come to us in social and environmental welfare. And I think the way that we're going to to impact social and environmental welfare is by understanding where we live. We live on a blessed and beautiful island in the middle of the Pacific. We are a very special people on a beautiful island. And I think it's it boils down to one thing. We have to aloha ke kahi i ke kahi. We have to love one another and understand that that love is not a warm, touchy-feely kind of love that feels good. It's a love that makes us know that we have kuleana. We have a responsibility to this island that we live on. There there should be no cars on the side of the road as rubbish. There should be no bottles on the side of the road. I've I've lost a hundred and twenty-seven pounds. I have walked this island. I did in one week fifty-nine miles. So I've walked some steps on this island and I've seen all sorts of of trash and rubbish on the island. And I think we have to check each and every one of us to make sure that we leave we leave a very small footprint behind us. We have to love Kauai. Mahalo anyhow.
Mahalo, all of our candidates. Thank you so much. This next phase is for all of you to give a non-traditional um closing statement. And it can be on any of the topics that you wish you would have covered on your own question or something new that you wanted to talk about. You have one minute to do it. And um we'll just go in the same reverse order, starting with Mr. Clint Tiago Senior. Clint Tiago Senior, your closing statement.
As a councilwoman, I will manage budgets, make a decision, overcome challenging, provide education, health, safety, recycling, supporting people of Kauai. Operate with quality service, setting policy, and the direction for a real outcome. Lead the county into a prosperous community so that I will help business and local tribe, families and community as well. As a whole education for our young, to give the best start in life whether you're on the move or extra care to elders. Thank you. Aloha. Please vote for Clint Tiago for County Council.
Mahalo.
Thank you, everybody.
Rory Parker, you have one minute to provide your non-traditional closing statement.
Well, thank you. Um look, we're at a turning point in history. Like this is this is a time of disruption. And going back to what was normal is just not an option. Um if you were struggling before COVID, if you're struggling now, you're going to be struggling after. Like you could be called an essential worker today, but you're going to be an at-will employee again tomorrow. Like, it doesn't matter if you vote for me. Like, vote for me, don't vote for me. Like, it's your choice. It's don't stop agitating. Like, don't let people convince you to settle for the way things were six months ago because they didn't work. Like, they worked for some people, but they still didn't work. And like, this is a chance to change the world. Like, change Kauai, change everywhere. And just keep that in mind, people. Please, just don't stop trying, don't give up, and don't let people tell you that it can't happen.
Thank you. Wally Nishimura.
Aloha. Thank you very much again for the opportunity. I greatly appreciate it. I'd like to briefly touch on some of the questions that I didn't get to answer. I think it's, I don't think it's a good idea to continue to put trash into the ground. You know, I've been a housekeeping manager. I'm currently an environmental services superintendent. I know what's in the trash and continue to put it in Kikaha is not a good idea. It was a problem twenty years ago. It was a problem last election. Unfortunately, it still hasn't been addressed. I want to address it. I want to suggest clean incineration to power. I also want to suggest curbside recycling. We have to be smart with stuff with things that can be recycled. We have to also implement the reusable utensil, I'm sorry, uh compostable utensils along with the styrofoam bag.
Ten seconds.
We have to also look at our moving our infrastructure toward the mountain, even after the museum in a domain to put roads and infrastructure to move away from the coastline.
Thank you, Wally. Next is Jackie Nelson.
Thank you. Yes. Yeah, I have a couple of things that I'd like to touch on. Um you mentioned, you know, relocating the people that are now living at Salt Pond at Litgate. I do live on the east side. I haven't driven through Salt Pond, but I would encourage you, or I have driven through Litgate several times since they started it. And what I'm doing when I go there is I'm looking for people I know. Because in addition to, you know, the mental health problems that we have, you know, causing homelessness and drug addiction causing homelessness, there there is an element living in these situations right now that are really just recently houseless. And I have driven through and found people that I know there and and helped them out. And I definitely plan to do that.
Ten seconds.
Those people. So that's something that everyone can consider. Um I'd also love to get some island beaters off the road. You know, we've talked a lot about climate change. Um most of our our industry being tourism right now employs a lot of low-income wage earners and
We're going to meet, you know?
Island beaters. You know, I did too until just last year.
Okay. Kipu Kai Koili'i.
I'm asking for your support for your vote. Working hard for the people of Kauai and the Ihow. I'm especially proud of my work budgeting responsibly and limiting taxes. Um responding to the extreme challenges of COVID nineteen, um this pandemic makes my strength in fiscal matters even more important. I have thirty years' experience in government, unions, nonprofits, and community organizations. On the council, I've proven I'm hardworking and trustworthy as well as demonstrated my dedication to public service, my legislative policy experience, my strength with budgeting, my understanding of the issues, and my commitment to working collaboratively. More than anything, what qualifies me is
Ten seconds.
I have for Kauai and my commitment to making a difference. Mahalo nui loa. Kipu Kai Koili'i for council.
Up next is Ariel Kanashiro.
Again, yeah, I just want to say thank you, you know, to everyone for their time and for putting on this forum and all other candidates. I know um and these are some tough questions and a tough forum, even for me who's been on council for three terms already. Um you know, I'm just humbled to have served this long and I, you know, I really look forward to the final term. And you know, um I would be remiss not to to my housing question um and saying, you know, the county has done a lot. Right now, there's currently um an affordable housing policy, an updated affordable housing policy that's going on. And you know, there's a bunch of projects on that the county has done, Kauai and Koloa, hundred thirty-three units that's going on, Limaola, hundred forty-nine units, Waimea Hua Kaa'i, sixty-seven units, Kealaula, which is gonna be uh near the water department, twenty-two units, and Pool Okei Affordable Housing Project, fifty-four units. And those last two projects are projects specifically for homeless. Um homeless will move into Kealaula, which is a transitional whole house. And um after they spend their time there, getting up back on their feet, they're able to transition to the Pool Okei Affordable Housing Project, which will be right across the street by the cinema. So again, just thank you for your time and just wanted to give you a little more info on what has actually happened at the county as far.
Up next is Ed Justice.
Thank you for having me. Um I wanted to say that one of the things I would like to do is to be able to bring the council to the community. Because the way it's currently set up right now, we have older meetings during the day, in the middle of the day, when most people are working and cannot attend. And I think it would be good if the council sent out a couple of members, maybe once a month or every couple of weeks, to different parts of the island, right? You can have, you got seven members, you can have one member at each part of the island. They can take in the community input, bring it back, and then try to take action on it. And then that way, next month, they can go back out to the community and be held accountable for whether they listened to the public or didn't, for what actions they took or didn't. So I think we can give it a shot. Let's try it. You know, the county's supposed to be here to serve the public. And that's that's why I'm running. I'm here to be here for you. If you want to vote for me, I'm happy to be a voice for you. My name's Ed Justice and my slogan is justice rule. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next is Richard Fukushima.
Okay, I would like to thank the just transition Hawaii people for setting up the meetings, first responders, police, fire, doctors, nurses, and the Hawaii Army National Guard, and the mayor and the COVID team. For me, the uh the environmental issues being prioritized is water quality, marine debris, plastic pollution, tourism, invasive species, and air quality. The island of Kauai is vulnerable to coastal hazards such as hurricanes, tsunamis, and erosion, and rising sea levels that will be part of the hazards we face in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Luke Eslin.
Yeah, I just want to briefly say that I think almost every issue that we talked about tonight comes back to housing in some capacity, right? Economic diversification, young people can't, you know, take a risk and start a job if they're struggling to afford a home, right? And if that job fails and they got nowhere else to live. Um agriculture, right? We cannot diversify agriculture as long as we have such development pressure of our ag land. Climate change, our number one source of carbon emissions is transportation. And that's because every year, uh we are driving way and way more on Kauai, right? The MP continues to go up. So while we are, you know, from a renewable energy perspective, kind of solving climate change, transportation continues to go up. And that's because we're building homes further and further away from our um town cores. You know, and and for the county council, we are the land use body. Um we are the ones who are decide, you know, powers of zoning and density and the form of development. So I feel like it's our primary responsibility to address housing, uh to get at all these other issues. I'm looking forward to hopefully working with everybody up here on these uh problems. And I thank you again to the organizers and everybody watching the forum tonight.
Up next is Deborah Lynn De Silva Caverro.
Let me unmute.
There you go.
Am I still muted?
No, you're not.
Okay. Aloha, De Silva Caverro for council. Um I want to touch bases on the homelessness situation. Some of them are families that has been um separated from their homes because of mortgage or foreclosures or whatever the case may be. So for them to get into these transitional places, they would have to go in as a group. I'm talking about some of the homeless that has relocated themselves here to Kauai. Um if we could go and do what we did for COVID nineteen and send them back where they originally came from, that would help us eliminate some of our homeless. And yes, aloha, Kauai anyhow. Yes, it's time for a change in our island. When you vote, take the time to focus and bring in new attitudes to the council. Vote not because of friends and family, vote because you know that a change is needed.
Ten seconds. Mahalo. Up next is Billy DeCosta. Let's unmute you first. Don't hold on one moment. There you go.
Okay. I'm Billy DeCosta. This is my fourth time running for city county council. I like to always think that a person runs his life like how he runs his politics. I'm a poor man, grew up in Pakala. Married my soulmate, has been loyal to her for twenty-eight years, raised three boys with a wooden spoon. And they respect adults. And I've been there active, very active during this quarantine time with generous donations across the island from Nacho to Kikaha. I am not your typical politician, but we are not in a typical time zone. You need Billy DeCosta, a man who gets stuff done, who's honest, loyal, and thinks out of the box. My ideal for the next two decades is to build a future for Kiki, that they can live in an economy that's thriving on diversified agriculture and not putting umbrellas in drinks at the hotel. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Danderan.
Hi, aloha. Um Mike Danderan here, and I want to thank Fern, Rita, Evan, JTHC, the Just Transition for for um doing this. Real quick, uh there was a question that I really wanted to answer, and that was the how you, what environmental issue would you prioritize? We have seven years left on the current landfill in Kikaha. We have an old landfill that is leaching toxins into the soil and the ocean. And we already have uh in in place a assessment happening right now that if we can have it line, mined and lined, we can stop that and give thirty years more life to the the new landfill if we were to go and fix it. So what I'm proposing is that we need to repair the old landfill in the next seven years so that we'll at least have another thirty years. And we need to stop the leaching because if that's hap- that's happening right now. And so that's
Ten seconds.
Saying things. Um the other, uh as far as rental cars, I want to show you something. This is show and tell. Can you see that? Okay, that's one. Two, can you see that, everyone? Thousands of rental cars. These are different parking lots all over the island.
You are now muted, Mike. Next is Ms. Felicia Cowden.
Let me find your video.
I want to, can you hear me?
Yes.
I want to thank the voters for giving me the honor of having a first term as your councilwoman. It's um It's been a really wonderful experience working with the people. I've had this phase in my life where my children are grown. I don't have anything dividing my attention. I'm able to just solely focus on getting this job done and listening to the people. I always tell people my number. If you're listening, six-five-two-four-three-six-three. I make house calls. I'm always happy to come out and understand what people are really experiencing. I think something really unique and important about this window is what we've learned in the COVID-19 time period, especially when we've had the visitors off the island. I'm looking nationally and globally that all these rules that we've grown up with, being told you could never break out of, like, going to school
Ten seconds.
So much that was not possible in the past is possible. So now we need to reset and rethink how we build our future. I need your vote. Thank you, Felicia Cowden. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Mason Shock. Let me find you.
Aloha. Aloha, everyone. Can you hear me? Okay, I just want to first mahalo all the candidates. You know, I think civil engagement is so important, and this is part of the process, and to have civil discourse is even more important for the best ideas to come forward. And so I look forward to campaign season just for that purpose. You know, one of the things that I think we learned mostly about throughout this pandemic was that the fact that we as a community need to take care of ourselves, and we know that very well because of past crises. And then with with crisis, there's always opportunity. And so many of the questions that were posed tonight, although there are many obstacles that are related to the state, like rental cars and our oversight over them. You know, we can't, we have to look past the fact that we don't have control over everything, and we need to set the example. A great example of that is the North Shore Shadow, which was community-led and government-supported. We need to duplicate those kinds of efforts. The the future is relying on how we organize together. Check out kauaifor.com. And also check in, check out, check out masonforkauai.org and check out what I've done in the last term and what I intend to do moving forward. Mahalo.
Thank you. Donovan Kabibi. We need you to unmute. Oh, you are unmuted. We can't hear you.
Ah, there we go.
Ha ha.
Oh, my fault. I had my microphone turned off. Anyway.
That's all right.
COVID-19 has made it clear that Kauai is more than capable and willing to cut the fat and do with less so we can have more later, which is exactly what we need to do to be able to diversify and build systems that are more equitable, just, and sustainable moving into our future. Districting for Kauai is one of those things that is very important, that'll take us into the future and bring inequitable access to government. January or June seventeenth, we'll be in front of the county council, making a proposal to them to introduce districting through the council. On June twenty-second, we'll be in front of the Charter Review Commission, pleading with them to make this charter amendment available for us on the ballot when we go to office. So good job, Kauai, supporting each other. Let's keep on keeping on, supporting each other, and making positive change happen. So inspired by the field of diversified candidates that we get to choose from. And it looks like we're going to have the opportunity to move in the right
Up next is Dr. Addison Bulasun. There you are. There we go.
Aloha, Ka'ako. This is Dr. Addison Bulasun. You know, all the questions I wanted to answer, and actually I did answer them, so I've written them out on a little Google sheet. I'm posting right now my actual email, so I can send that to you. Just message me. I know these questions are really important to you. Thank you to the all our hosts. Thank you, Juno, for doing this. Thank you to the team for putting this together. You know, this is a pivotal moment for all of us. And it takes a lot of heart, and it takes a lot of collaborativeness to make this happen. So I'm really excited that we're all coming together to make this happen for all of us. And I'll just take a moment. I got like maybe twenty or thirty more seconds. So I just ask all of yous right now to just close your eyes for a moment and put your hand on your heart. And just know that we can do this together.
Ten seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jade Wai Ali Ali Batad.
I'd like to thank you all for putting this together making this possible for us. So thank you very much for having us tonight. I want to apologize to the the young people on Kauai that says Kauai is not for them. We are for you. You are our future. You are our keiki, and our keiki are important. But it's our kuliana to make sure that we instill in our keiki fabric of who we are as a culture. And that doesn't matter. It doesn't matter if you have a ko'ko' from, you know, Hawaiian, or if you're just implanted here. It doesn't matter. The fact that you're here makes you have kuliana. You have a responsibility to make sure that you you malama our culture and who we are as a people. We have to pass that on to our keiki so that they'll know and be able to sustain themselves, so that they know how to fish and they know how to huki kalo, and they know how to go to the lo'i pa'aka'i. And that we take care of all of these places that are so endearing to us, that are part of who we are. I'm Jade Wai Ali Ali Batad, and it is my kuliana to serve you. And I'm honored.
Mahalo. Mahalo. Thank you, candidates. And all of you who are tuned in tonight for taking the time to watch and get informed. This forum was recorded and can be viewed on Facebook at the Community Coalition of Kauai page, and also in the Just Transition Hawaii Coalition Facebook group page. Please encourage those who missed today's forum to tune in. Thank you to the sponsors of tonight's event. Just Transition Hawaii Coalition, who is active on all the islands, coordinating forums just like this, like yesterday's in Maui, tonight here on Kauai, tomorrow in Hawaii Island, or AKA the Big Island, and Friday night Oahu. Check their Facebook page for more information. They support a livable planet by creating an inclusive, decentralized, equitable economy that considers the environment, labor, and the rights of all. Local sponsors are the Community Coalition of Kauai, People of Kauai Together, seeking proactive solutions into the future, and the newly formed three-fiftykauai.org Climate Action Coalition, working to reduce our climate emissions on Kauai in socially responsible ways and adapting to the changing environment. Now, an announcement from the League of Women Voters, a nonpartisan political organization. Please give vote by mail's first year its maximum chance. Make sure your voter registration record is up to date. Ballots will be sent out eighteen days prior to the election, either by mail, or voters may visit any voter service center or drop boxes. Locations can be found on elections.hawaii.gov. Voters can check out www.vot411.org for their one-stop shop for election-related information on candidates. Now, mark your calendars, folks. You have until Thursday, July ninth, next month, 2020, to register for the Saturday, August eighth, 2020, primary election. You will find the online voters' registration links as well as other informative links in the chat box. I'm going to copy and paste it in there. And remember that the general election is on Tuesday, November third, 2020. As soon as I get my chat box working again, I will send you that link. Oh, candidates running for office. Thank you, Fern. Candidates running for office is not easy. We all know that. May the odds forever be in your favor. Remember to have fun and act from the kindness of your heart. Audience, choose wisely. Your collective voice and individual choices matter. I'm Juno Apala, and to all a good luck. Good night and sweet dreams.